Can live on land initially settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shawnee and the Osage, and those identified through cultures, commonly known as the Adena, Hopewell, and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we work to improve our city's legacy. Our first order of business this evening is to establish quorum. Six of seven council members are present this evening, and we have quorum. I would like to now request a motion to appoint Ryan Schwartzoff as acting clerk for this meeting. We have a motion and a second to appoint Ryan as acting clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The acting clerk is appointed. We now move on to disposition of the minutes of the regular session of City Council held March 3rd, 2025. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comment or questions on these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The minutes are approved. Our next item of business is communications. Do any council members have communications they would like to share? Yes, Member Thomas?
I have two. The first one is about a prom closet giveaway at the Fairfield Inn hotel. They are looking for prom attire that they can give away and let people come from. They are doing the giveaway March 29th, 12/3. And they're getting a lot of dresses, but they could really use some boxes along with fresh shoes. So if you happen to have any of those that don't fit any longer, drop them off to Melissa That's the fun one. The second one was, I just wanted to make people in the community aware of some changes at the state level on issue two that we voted on a couple years ago, three and a half ago. They've been moving and waiting on this issue on marijuana dispensing applications for a while. There have been two, House Bill 160 and Senate Bill 56. Senate Bill 56 has passed the Senate. They are talking about, there are different versions. They both make changes to what was passed by voters. Variety of changes, and you can read through all the differences and changes they'd like to make. Biggest one that really would impact us locally is one that I think people should be contacting representatives about, and that is they want to change money that was guaranteed to host communities that would come into our pockets in our community. And what was passed was taxed at 10% and 36% of those taxes would come to us. Current changes are to cut the local fund from 36% to 20% and phase it out completely in five years, which is basically, you know, we've made zoning changes. Other communities have made zoning changes coming into their community, and it's pretty much a slap in the face. If you feel inclined and you'd like to reach out to any of your local representatives, let them know that you don't support this, that it is not what was voted on. I think we would all appreciate it. I'm sure Mayor's office would appreciate it. Brought us some similar paperwork that I had already had some notes on today, and we were all thinking around the same thing. You may have some additional notes. And that's it. Thank you.
You, Member McCary?
Thank you. I'm seeing a lot of green in the audience on the dais today, so happy St. Patrick's Day for those who are observing that. And congratulations to our Ohio University Student Senate for its kickoff of its annual Pride Week, and that's the LGBTQIA Affairs Commission of Student Senate, from which the LGBT Center at Ohio University emerged back in the 90s. And for community members who drive by the intersection of Union and College Street, you'll see a field of pride flags representing diversity within the LGBTQ community on display, thanks to those Student Senate members. And that is, again, part of their Pride Week that begins today. Congratulations to them.
Thank you, Member McCary. Any other communications? Yes, Members, be honest.
Yes. The West Side Community Association, events in Junction in Part II, unification month that, so on April 12th, it's a Saturday, up, and we're going to have an opportunity to open up and we will make places to get your trash. And also remember that that week, trash pickup, so people can take their trash. There's more plans. Also, there's the 13th day of effort at the West Side, and that will be to pick up those spaces around the city on the west side and along the bike path where people have been living there and longer there. So, and just as a reminder, the solid waste district having their recycle day on the 26th, and the West Side University has a pickup trucks come around, free out, and let them know if they want to come to the fairground.
Other council members? Now move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director's Office? Senator Heck is not present tonight. Treasurer Thomas?
No.
Mayor Patterson?
I have a few items for council this evening. Councilmember Thomas, I'm glad you brought up the funding that would come back to municipalities that have recreational marijuana dispensaries. It doesn't apply to medical. It applies only to recreational. And just to add a little bit, a little more context to what Councilmember Thomas was mentioning, it's estimated through this Ohio State, the Ohio State University study or survey, that about, on average, $350,000 would go back to host municipalities if they have two dispensaries. We have two dispensaries, and that is money that would go back in the general revenue to which we had been planning to continue to support fire and police department efforts with that funding. We could have used it in a couple other ways as well, but, you know, to have this clawback would be, would certainly have an impact on the city of Athens, as it would with any other municipality. There's municipalities that went through the length of rezoning their cities in order to create spaces for dispensaries going in predicated upon the revenue that they had anticipated receiving, which is in this report. There's other municipalities that the only reason they passed or allowed for dispensaries in their municipalities was because of that revenue that would come into their cities, and now for it to be turned, for this change, potential change, to go through, just flies in the face of, as Member Thomas said, the voters, you know, the voters going forward with something like that. So I appreciate you bringing that up. I have a copy for anybody here who wants to see the report that came from Ohio State. Athens, we did weigh in on that particular survey as well, so our voice is embedded in this information. A couple other things I want to share really quick, because, you know, when it rains, it pours. There's legislation, it's Senate Bill 104, there's a preemptive measure to take away a municipality's ability to regulate short-term rentals. If this goes forward, the short-term rental regulation that we have, which largely protects with, I mean, it's permissible with guardrails, short-term rentals in our R1 neighborhoods, that would likely go away to where we don't have that ability to regulate that anymore Again, I would recommend anybody on council or anyone who is here today who thinks that that's not a wise thing to do, to take away the regulatory authority of Home Rule in our own community, to reach out to Representative Jones, or to Senator Chavez, or anybody else that you choose to reach out to in our state legislature. It's still raining. The Department of Transportation Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant that we were awarded, that was the grant that Deputy Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky went through the Local Infrastructure Hub Bootcamp and came out the other end of the grant. We started reaching out to local municipalities to see if they would want to partner with us. Many, many did, and then it just grew bigger and bigger. I've told you guys this story before, but the grant grew bigger and bigger, and so we handed it off to SOPAC, Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, or Sustainable Public Energy Council, who then reached all the way over to Dayton, Ohio. Dayton wanted to be part of this grant. There was over 20 municipalities, including schools, libraries, and cities and villages to include the Village of Amesville, the 172 people where their wish, wish, wish list to get a charging station, you know, was oftentimes a bridge too far with other financial constraints that they had in the village. It's frozen. In the infinite wisdom of the current administration, there is a review process that's going on. Allegedly, that review is going to be completed by the end of the month. I have serious concerns about that, but the program identifies, identifies programs in which the award selections may have included the following elements, and this is important: equity activities, diversity, equity, and inclusion activities, climate change activities, environmental justice activities, gender-specific activities, when the primary purpose, excuse me, is bicycle infrastructure, and finally, electric vehicles, EVs, and EV charging station infrastructure, which that's what we applied for. And it'll be a project-by-project review, $16.7 million that, who knows? The last thing, I hope this is the last thing. No, I have two more things. Second to last thing is, I received a letter, it's to me and my capacity as the president of the National League of Cities, as well as NLC CEO Clarence Anthony, and it's from the city of Gehanna. And they are weighing in, and I'm asking council tonight to also consider a resolution to weigh in on being supportive of tax-exempt municipal bonds. I've mentioned that to council before. I'm asking council again. I'll give you a great example out of Gehanna, a $64 million project with municipal, tax-exempt municipal bonds is going to save that community $15 million on the project alone. If that goes, if the tax-exempt municipal bonds goes away, then think about what a city, village is going to have to come up with to fill that gap, and the answer is likely that they won't be able to do it. For infrastructure, we've used them for the city swimming pool. We used it for the parking garage back in the day. We've also used it for the fire station headquarters, saving the citizens of Athens lots of money by having something like that. So I'm encouraging, again, council to consider, I can share with you the resolution from Gehanna if you choose to see it, and I would encourage council to be a part of the collective force that is the National League of Cities, you know, going up on Capitol Hill, to which I was just there on Wednesday. We just wrapped up our Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC, which was a fantastic conference. Spent a full day on Wednesday up on the hill advocating for things that I know are important to you, but equally important to 19,500 cities, towns, and villages across the nation. The last thing I want to share with council tonight, so thank you for bearing with me. We received a letter from our partner city, Austro-Ukraine. I may have shared this, I think I shared it with council. If I did not, I did? Okay, wonderful. And it's, they're asking for all four, all five of their partner cities to come to Austro in June to be a part of their celebration, celebrating their 925th year anniversary as a municipality. We're old at 227, but, boy, that compels in comparison to Austro. I do plan to go over and be a part, as much as I will forever be supportive of what Ukraine is having to manage and deal with at this point in time, regardless of things that you may be listening to at the national stage. I, as a partner with a city over in Ukraine, I think it's vitally important at this time, more than ever, to show that we are supportive of what they're trying to do in managing an unjust, unprovoked invasion of a sovereign nation by a neighboring state. Council, thank you for allowing me to report up a question from Councilmember Swank.
Yes, sir. You talked about the tax-exempt municipal bonds. Would this be a resolution in addition to the one that we passed back on March 3rd or in replacement of? Because this council did on March 3rd, passed Resolution 0225, declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Do we need, are you asking we do something above and beyond that?
I am just asking to reaffirm that resolution, but add in that they, if you want to, that you'd like to be part of the National League of Cities moving forward with a series of resolutions, because they've got pretty significant lobbying power through the National League of Cities. I think it would be helpful to double down on both of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We will now move on to ordinances for third reading. I will read the titles and introduce the introducing member from council. Ordinance 15-25 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 121-24, authorizing 2025 staffing levels, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that would be adopt 015-25.
Second.
This ordinance has been read twice, it's been through committees. Everyone has a copy of the ordinance itself on your disk drive. I'm sure you've all read it. I really don't see the necessity of rereading it again, so let's vote on it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 15-25. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? City administration? Members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion is approved, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 19-25 is an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 34.874 acres owned by Frander Properties LLC east of Cable Lane, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
The next three ordinances are all very much related, and as Member Reisner said, this has been through a very comprehensive process. In fact, this one even has an additional thing. We had a hearing on it. 19 deals with accepting the petition for annexation, so I would move that council pass 01925.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass 19-25. Any comments or questions from council members? Elected officials, city administration, members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 19-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 20-25 is an ordinance designating the zone for the Cable Lane annexation area, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
02025 designates the zone as R1 residential, next to current residential R1 zones. I would move the council pass 02025.
We have a motion and a second to pass 20-25. Any comments or questions from council? Elected officials, city administration, members of the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 21-25 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a perpetual right-of-way utility easement with Frander Properties LLC on property annexed into the city on Cable Lane, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
The title is read by the president, describes this in detail. I would move the council pass 02125.
Seconded. We have a motion and a second to adopt 21-25. Any comments or questions on this ordinance from council? City administration? Members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 23-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance, 115-24, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that would be adopt 23-25. Just to refresh your memory, this is to appropriate $10,000 for driver intervention programs for the municipal court. And that's about it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 23-25. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? City administration? Members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 23-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Now move on to ordinances for second reading. I will read the title and then see if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 25-25 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at 145 Grove Narrows Street for construction of a wooden fence that crosses an unused city alleyway, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Ordinance 26- oh, yes, Member Claude Felder.
I do have one comment on that. Just in case anybody thinks that by blocking this alleyway, we would be hindering people in an emergency situation from getting out of the neighborhood, this would only be blocked kind of at the dead end of that alley. It ends on the property of this homeowner, and that's the only part that's being blocked off, so it wouldn't affect anybody's ability to get out of the neighborhood.
Other comments or questions? Ordinance 26-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance, 115-24, and amending ordinance 127-23, authorizing design, construction, and construction engineering of the Dairy Lane Stagecoach Sewer as part of the city-county sewer expansion project number 317, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 27-25 is an ordinance amending ordinance 33-24, authorizing a city fiber network, project number 347, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 28-25 is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2025 energized community grant funds, introduced by Councilmember We now move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 29-25 is an ordinance authorized-
Yes, people got to leave.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Those who need to recuse themselves, please do so, and we'll wait for, let the public know that the Ohio Ethics Commission has advised that our local business owners not participate in these ordinances that involve street closures. Ordinance 29-25 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the uptown- in the uptown area for the Plains Lions Club Cruisin's, Ohio Brew Week, the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival, Bounty on the Bricks, and the Halloween Block Party, and to change requested dates or cancel the events as necessary, introduced by Councilmember Spionis.
Thank you, President Crowell. So, what happened this last week was we found out that there were a couple of other organizations that wanted to have street closures, and because Debbie wasn't here, and so I need to make an amendment to this. So, in the beginning, it's the Dora Kickoff and the Pride Festival event. So, the beginning would have an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the uptown area for the Dora Kickoff, and then after, the Plains Lions Club Cruisin's, the Pride Festival. Then under A, Section 1, where it talks about the closing of streets and says potentially the same thing, it says, "Close designated streets to vehicular traffic in the City of Athens no earlier than 6:00 AM, no later than midnight, and maintain cross-traffic wherever practical for the following events." So, we need to add the Dora Kickoff, 5/17/2025, West State Street between Court Street and Congress, and then after, the Plains Lions Club Cruisin's, I had the Pride Festival, 6/17/2025, close union between Congress and Court Street. And that would be the amendment, so.
We have a motion to amend 29-25. Is there a second? Seconded. We have a motion and a second to amend 29-25 with the language as read by Members Spionis. Are there any comments or questions? Member Reisner?
Have these changes been vetted by the Deputy Service Safety Director?
Oh, yes, I do, I guess I should have explained that, but you would think I would check that, but in any case-
No.
So, Andrew Chiki sent these to me after these groups had completed a lengthy form that Deputy Service Safety Director has completed, and so I found out about them through him, and then he copied Debbie, but Debbie wasn't here, so I'm reporting it this way instead.
Thank you for that question, Member Reisner. I think we are all sort of learning this new process, but that is the appropriate steps as of course to come from Mr. Chiki before it comes to Members Spionis.
Exactly, and it did.
Excellent, thank you. We have a, yes, Member McCary?
I would just like to request an update on what happens with forthcoming proposals at this point, if this is adopted.
My understanding, and I think we're in agreement on this, the people that I've talked to and the administration and whatnot, is that if they come, we will, we will consider them, but they have to consider that it will be many weeks in advance. They can't just pop it in on a heartbeat, they have to go through the process and try to get it to us six weeks ahead of time. Is that fair to say, Mayor?
And as Member Swank has pointed out, we cannot suspend the rules with our smaller council, with two members having to recuse themselves, so it won't be possible for somebody to come and get an ordinance passed.
We don't have any word from Boogie on the Bricks, and that's coming up relatively soon. We also, Andrew was approached by a group called Jeeps, but he has written to them well over a week ago to get it in and heard nothing, so it could be out of luck.
Okay, to stick to this amendment, are there any additional questions or comments on the amendment? Mr. Swank?
How about a little clarity on the 5/17 Dora Kickoff, the one that was added today? What is this, who's sponsoring it, so on and so forth?
I have that in front of me. So, it is...
While Members Spionis looks, I believe it's a repeat of what's occurred in the past on West State Street, sponsored by maybe Casa and Tonys?
Right, so Tonys and Casa want to, I'm reading here from Andrew, so Tonys and Casa would like to close West State Street between Court and Congress to do a Dora Kickoff between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. They also are wanting to use the event as a fundraiser for the Athens Public Library to bring the bookmobile up for kids and also the Children's Discovery Museum for activities. And so, yeah, pretty good cause, actually.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the amendment on this table?
Do you want me to add anything about the Pride Festival?
Nope, there have been no questions about that. Okay, no additional questions. We are now voting on the amendment, 29-25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion carries, and 29-25 has been amended and read for the first time. Member Swank?
Okay, so back to Section 1, we got into some issues with this last year. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to close streets in the uptown area, da-da-da-da, and to change requested dates or cancel the events. They make it perfectly clear, does not say add, correct?
This does not say add.
And to add, we would have to go through the process of committee and three readings.
This is correct.
Okay, so that's point number one. Point number two, last week, we talked about a couple of these events. The Plains, the Lions Club Cruisin', the last one on the 29th. And last week, as everyone knows, was OU's spring break, and this town kind of got quiet. I was not able to track down Mr. Sam Booth. If you remember, Mr. Booth was a gentleman who came and visited us and told us about a huge BMW event that is coming to town that same weekend. I think, no need to hold this up today, but I think before we get the third reading and vote on this, we need to make sure logistically this is something the city can handle, because he's talking about as many as 3,000 motorcyclists, which is huge, and good for the city and good for the economy. That's number one. Number two, and this is the one that concerns me more, because I think it's a potential safety issue, and that is the Ohio Brew Week Fall Fest on 9/6. That is a Saturday. It's also the same day as the Ohio University-West Virginia football game. And I do know, and the mayor, I can confirm, or maybe if I'm wrong, please tell me, with big football games like this, particularly with traffic management and the like, the Ohio University Police Department appreciates the help that our officers can provide. Right now, the game time is not set, was not able to get ahold of Julie Cromer. Last week was the MAC basketball championship in Cleveland, and of course, they were on break, too. But again, I think before we vote on this, we need to take a very, very close look to see if we can handle this from a health and safety standpoint, and if it's determined that we can't, perhaps this Fall Fest could be moved back a week to the 13th. There is no home football game that weekend, and it will allow our, our officers and fire people to accommodate this event. This will be a huge event, there will be an invasion of people in Athens from the other side of the Ohio River for this game, and two big events could be a little bit too much in a small area. So, I will continue to track down Julie Cromer and get her thoughts on that, also in terms of the game time, and certainly share that with the administration, because the safety and the ability of our police force to do what they need to do is very, very important.
Thank you, Member Swank. We will now move on to, are there any comments or questions from the city administration on this ordinance? Members of the public? We will now move on to Ordinance 30-25, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in designated event areas, introduced by Councilmember Spionis.
Thank you. Okay, this one, of course, coincides with what we just talked about, and so during these, some of these major events, we would like to have vendors. I did check with the two new organizations, they were not interested in having vendors. So, we don't need to change anything that's already presented to us, so it can just be first reading. Okay, it's the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, is hereby suspended from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM to allow vending in the designated street closure areas authorized by Ordinance 29-25, at such times and areas determined appropriate by the administration for the following events, and that's Athens Arts and Music Festival, the Ohio Brew Week events, Bounty on the Bricks, and Halloween Block Party. So, it goes on to describe how vendors can take advantage of this opportunity. Perspective vendors shall register their name, address, and items to be vended, the code enforcement office on or before two business days prior to listed events by 2:00 PM. Vendors shall be entitled to vendor spots on a first-come, first-served basis as determined by the code enforcement office. Vendors must comply with all rules and regulations established by the Office of Code Enforcement. Section 3 talks about vending shall be subject to the following. Those vendors currently holding a license to vend on East Union Street shall be allowed to continue to operate at a time, location, and location determined by the Service Safety Director or event organizer. You have $25 per vendor and food license. Permit from the Athens City-County Health Department shall be established for all others per trailer and age of the City of Athens Code Enforcement Office and any such additional things, rules, et cetera. So, that's the first reading.
Thank you, Members Spionis. Comments or questions, Member Claude Feltzer?
Just one, and I realize it's a fine point, but I wouldn't want it to hurt the people organizing the Ohio Brew Week events. Now that there's the Fall Fest as well, I wonder if there should be some indication there that it's more than one event that's being referred to? The Fall Fest seems very different than the main Ohio Brew Week, first call and last call.
Administration, what do you have to say about that?
Yeah, I, I can recheck with that, with the way this reads, because I believe that the Ohio Brew Week, that that's really referencing is the last call, because that's the event that goes later into the evening, which would trigger the addition of the new ordinance.
Okay, so not, so the Fall Fest would not include vending?
Well, you're on the vending portion.
As it does say, there is no such thing as Fall Fest on here, it says, "Ohio Brew Week, first call, Ohio Brew Week, last call."
But then it says, "Ohio Brew Week, Fall Fest."
Fall Festival.
Yeah, but it still says, "Ohio Brew Week."
I can get clarity on that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Swank?
But yeah, to that end, the first two, Ohio Brew Week, first call, 7/11, Ohio Brew Week, last call, 7/19, that falls during the Dora time period. Ohio Brew Week, Fall Fest, 9/6 does not. So, it's kind of a misnomer.
It still says, "Ohio Brew Week."
That's what I said, it's a misnomer. Brew means beer, and that's outside the Dora time period. I guess is the intention to be able to do the same thing during Ohio Brew Week Fall Fest that one can do during Ohio Brew Week, first call and last call?
Well, if it's not within the Dora, I would say no.
Let me chime in on this, because what Ohio Brew Week is required to do, because they themselves generate revenue, which is where Ohio Brew Week's revenue comes from, is the first call, and most importantly, the last call, they are required to get an F2 permit. F2 permits, doesn't matter whether the Dora is active or isn't active, and they'll likely go after a F2 permit, which they go through the sheriff's office to get that approved, and then it goes up to Department of Commerce, it's always approved. So, it doesn't require Dora, you can still be vending alcohol on the street within the sanction of an F2 permit, liquor permit.
So, are you saying that there's a good chance on 9/6, an F2 permit would be requested?
Yeah, probably, I'm sure they do. They do that all the time.
Then I think we have a real problem with that football game.
Any other comments or questions on this ordinance? Yes, Member McCary?
I'm thinking this is the ordinance that most relates to the concern that I've heard from businesses about how street closures and these increased vending opportunities negatively impact their business, but I'm looking for any additional information about any efforts to better understand or mitigate those negative impacts, or is it just our understanding that by approving these street closures and additional vending opportunities, it's just kind of sharing of the community spaces and the calendar opportunities? Just wanted to ask if anyone had any updates on those elements.
Well, I know for a fact, the bar's pulled out, other than the two named today, in terms of doing these things this year. They're sitting it out. We also heard here from the administration several weeks ago that the administration has heard, and in many cases, it hurts business more than it helps. And this just seems like a lot of closures in a short period of time. And I think if you polled citizens in some sections of the city, they would tell you, "Well, there's something going on uptown, we're closing the streets, I'm not going uptown." So, those are things, those are some things I've heard.
Appreciate that. I wonder if others have comments, which I welcome, otherwise, I'm interested in figuring out what we might need to address as far as capacity issues, or how full our calendar can get with these events.
Other comments or questions?
I'm honestly not surprised, or I am surprised, I suppose, that businesses have not come forward to say, "Hey, there's too many of them," and be more vocal about it, because I mean, they know this is happening. We made this pretty public.
This is the first time they've heard it, tonight.
They did have, they know what's happening every year.
But we have 10 on here. 10. That's a lot.
That's true. So, this is your opportunity to discuss this, let us know what you think.
Or we can knock on doors and ask.
Other comments or questions on this ordinance? This is the first reading, so as Member Swank and others have pointed out, there's additional information that can be solicited, and we can continue to move forward on figuring out what's best for the City of Athens. Other comments from council? For the administration, Mayor?
I would just like to weigh in and concur with Councilmember Swank's comment about reaching out to the athletic director, Julie Cromer. I'll be reaching out to Amy Cromer myself, as well, to get more clarity on that, in terms of have they locked down, you know, when's the timeframe in which they'll lock it down, what's going to happen then.
Members of the public, any comments or questions? Please come to the podium, give us your name and your address, whether you represent a group, you may have three minutes. And thank you for being here.
My name is Natalie Lyle, and I live at 350 Grand Central Road, between Albany, which is between Albany and New Marshall. And addressing your comments you just made on the closures uptown, it's the closures uptown for music and things that brings me in to panel in summer, not away from. Summer is when people like me do come into town, because students are gone with the
Thank you for being here, we appreciate your comment. Anyone else from the community like to speak to this? Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 31-25, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.04, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in Designated Event Areas, introduced by Councilmember Spionis.
I'm the hot seat again, so here we go. This one's, it goes along with the others, obviously, because some events are noisy and go late into the evening. So, this is Section 1, the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, it pretty much says it in the title, so I'll just move on to unnecessary noises hereby suspended until midnight on the day of the event for the following street closures authorized by Ordinance 29-25, Athens Arts and Music Festival, Ohio Brew Week, and Halloween Block Party. And again, I checked with those additional organizations, and they don't want, they don't need that, so they're daytime activities. So, no changes need to be made on this.
Thank you, Members Spionis, read for the first time. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? The administration, Mayor? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 32-25. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at metered spaces in the municipal parking garage on certain dates in December 2025. Introduced by Councilmember Spillmans.
Thank you, again.
Oh, we got people getting back.
Oh, yep, thanks. Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. How did you?
I was trying to...
You ruined everything.
It does seem as if we had more local business people in the room during that discussion, we would have been better off and less better off. That's the way it is.
I was looking for you to wave, and then I turned my head.
Okay, welcome back, Members Wood and Thomas. We just introduced 32-25. Councilmember Spillmans?
Okay, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking, et cetera. So we do this every year, have been for a while. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to suspend the fee for parking in the municipal parking garage excluding two hour metered spaces on One Upper for the following dates in calendar 2025. And as was discussed last week, for the purpose of this is to get people downtown and shopping and having a good time. So it's Friday, December 5th, after 4:00 p.m. for Uptown Tree Lighting, Saturday, September 6th, all day, Thursday, December 11th, after 4:00 p.m., Thursday, December 18th, after 4:00 p.m., Saturday, December 20th, all day, Wednesday, December 24th, all day. And this has been read for the first time.
Thank you, Members Spillmans. Any comments or questions from council on this ordinance? City administration, Mayor?
I have a question for the Assistant Law Director. Given what our two business owners had to go through with council on the last three pieces of legislation, are they going to have to deal with the same thing with this? And I apologize to those two council members, because it just, to me, it's just fascinating. No, this is a good way, but...
Actually, I have a question on it.
Okay, good. Ask your question.
This is, because we did this last year, but this is for the, not for the parking garage or the metered spaces. This is just for neighborhoods. I don't want anyone to park for three weeks and get ticketed or towed.
No, no. This is for the parking garage.
This is for the parking garage.
That's the next one, yeah.
So we're doing it...
We're on 32.
We're on 32, okay, thank you. I was like, I'm very confused here, but I came in too quick. All right, yeah, that's a good question from the mayor. I don't, that's for you.
Yeah, um, I mean, the guidance came from the Ethics Board, so I'm not the Ethics Board. I think if it's a concern, we need to see further guidance.
It's of no concern. I'm looking out on the map, because we've already gone through this process when it came to the street closing issue. And now this is to, as was indicated, you know, having free parking, and then it's going to be free meters to encourage shopping up in the uptown area, so I...
I think that's a gigantic stretch. I don't see any concern.
Oh, really?
I really don't.
Member Wood?
I mean, I think this, it points out the farce of the earlier issues, which is that, you know, there's no logical end at some point, being unable to vote on anything just because it has some impact on the city, because we're business people, somehow, I mean, that cascades, right? I would have made the argument that by that logic, we shouldn't have been able to vote on the tax increase because we pay taxes. You know, I think it's, I think it's a farce, I think it's silly. I don't appreciate people that instigated it. But yeah, so I think there should be some logical point where it's outside the realm of these smaller, smaller one-offs, but not a lawyer.
And the Ethics Board do have lawyers. And you said publicly that it would hurt your business with street closures. So I think that is fair to bring that up to the Ethics Board. This would not be. That's the line.
Other comments or questions on this ordinance?
Can I?
Member Thomas?
Just in response to that, and to back up, Member Wood, it's possible to have a discussion and admit that something will impact you, but also, if it doesn't impact others, how to meet those middle grounds, and that should be what we're doing up here. All of these street closure discussions could have been had with us in the room, and we don't get a final say, it's seven voices. What's done is done, but to say we can't have this conversation because there's two differing views, even in our own heads, is pretty insulting.
It's important to...
Other comments or questions?
It's important to understand that the ethics question has to do with whether it could impact you financially, personally, financially, and that's a pretty clear line. So let's move on.
Any other comments or questions from city council members? City administration? Mayor? Members of the public? Seeing none, moving on to ordinance 33-25. An ordinance suspending Athens City Code Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Sunday, December 14th, 2025, through midnight on Sunday, January 11th, 2026. Introduced by Councilmember Spillmans.
Thank you. Okay, Athens City Code 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location is hereby suspended from Sunday, December 14th, 2025, through midnight on Sunday, January 11th, 2026. Again, we do this annually throughout the city, so it gives people an opportunity to go on vacation without getting their cars towed, especially in those places where they cannot park anywhere else. They don't have driveways or, or whatever, so it's a pretty simple one.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from city council members on this ordinance? Yes, Member Wood?
I have an additional question, actually. When I was doing my canvassing for my very first campaign, somebody mentioned that people still have to move during snow emergencies as well, or have been ticketed in our neighborhood for not moving in the two-day phase. Is there any way to do similar things around snow emergencies? The folks that brought it up were senior citizens, and they'd been ticketed because of not moving in two days, but of course, it's snowing and they were homebound, so. And this seems like a good spot to ask about that, see if that's an accurate statement, or if there's a way to wedge that in for snow emergencies, if it is. Is that where I'm going?
So are you asking if now, do we ticket during snow emergencies so that vehicles get off the roads?
I'm asking if we ticket during snow emergencies for parking in the same spot for a number of days, and if that's true, can we, can we maybe look at modifying that?
You know, you've probably lived here longer than I have, Councilmember Wood, but I've lived here since 1998, and there was only one incident that I can remember where we had 24 inches of snow fall within a 24-hour period of time, and that probably would have constituted people not being able to move their car. I think even back then, that grace was given to everybody, recognizing that with such a snow event, it's next to potmashes. It's very difficult to remove the snow from around your car on the street so that snowplows can come in and plow things out effectively. It's something I considered when I was sitting in your seat. I considered it back in 2012, looking at a model such as Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, to where they had, it's signed to where you can only park on this side of the street, you know, every day of the week but Tuesday, you know? And then you could only park on the other side of the street, where you could park on the other side every single day of the week except for Thursday. And that was, was based upon other things, street cleaning and snow removal during snow It kind of fell flat. Is it worth considering? It can be considered. I think council can certainly mull over it. I would also keep in mind that, I don't know about the rest of you, I certainly saw more snow falling in my first decade of living in the city of Athens than I have in the second and, and almost third decade of living here, because of this little thing called climate change. We're not seeing what we used to see, at least the impacts that we saw before. I would, I would weigh that as well as to what this looks like, but I think maybe there's a middle ground that can certainly be explored. Because I do know that it is an issue, the issue really being the snowplow, being able to get closer to the curbs where there are curbs, or closer to the sides of the street. Our snowplows, they're going to go barreling right down the middle of the road as best they can, and our snow crews are great at doing what they do. But I'm open to any discussion with council if they think that there's a way in which this could be more effectively done.
Members Swank?
The mayor brings up a very, very good point, and the neighborhood I'm most familiar with in terms of snow is the Near East Side. And we have two members down here at the end that live on that side. During this last 11-inch snow that we had during that week, the streets that were able to be plowed on the Near East Side effectively were Home Street, May, Morris, Shannon. What do all of those streets have in common? You can only park on one side. Ohio, Sunnyside, Maplewood, and Elmwood were ice skating rinks for 10 days. Other cities can do it. I think it's something, transportation, we really need to take a serious look at. There are people that don't have driveways, but there are also people that don't want to play the car rotation game, where they have plenty of driveway and two cars, but they put one on the street. And there's no way on those narrow streets that I just mentioned that our snowplows can do an effective job, and then what happens? Cars get plowed in, and the mayor gets phone calls, you plowed my car in. But I'll take it a step further. Because of that inability to plow effectively, we heard from the Disabilities Commission what happens at the intersections. I hate to be talking about snow in March, because we're probably, I'm going to get another one because of it, but I would hope, in conjunction with this, that, because we have, this is a long way off before we have to worry about this, that we might be able to work something into this that addresses that parking on one side of the street. The other thing is, snow emergencies are declared by the sheriff of a county, and they can only be declared on a county-wide basis. You can't have a snow emergency three out in the county and one in the city, although many times, that's exactly what it is. But if you ever get out and drive some of our county roads, you can see why it is a three. And we, with this particular administration, not city administration, the sheriff's office is very aware of that, and if you notice, we get snow emergencies very quickly, when in the city, we only have this much snow. So I think we can look at that, and, and I would hope maybe, since we're talking about next winter, that maybe as we're moving this ordinance along, we can put in a Section 3 or 4, whatever, addressing maybe certain streets, and we just do the proper signage and all of that. But other cities do it. In fact, some cities, two inches of snow, everybody gets off the street. Period.
So just for clarity, are you talking about amending this now?
Well, let's, let's hold on, Members Spillmans. This ordinance, we've gotten a little bit off topic, and I think it's a good discussion to have, but it is not directly related to this ordinances, which is very time-specific, until January 11th. So if we're talking about snow in late January or February, it would not be covered under this ordinance.
Right.
But I do encourage Member Wood to follow through with the mayor's invitation and look into the issue that you brought up tonight. Sounds like Member Swank also has some information. Any additional comments or questions on this ordinance? Anything to add to this, Mayor? Treasurer, public? Okay, moving on, 34-25. Is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for construction of the State Route 68256 Intersection Improvements Project, number 357. Introduced by Councilmember Spillmans.
Yes, as you know, we've been talking about this for a while, and the city has been discussing the importance of it, and I've certainly been supportive of it in many ways, but before I read this, I need to make a statement, so please bear with me. I have supported the Route 6256 roundabout from the beginning with two stipulations. One, that adequate assurances were made for the maintenance of traffic, given some of the problems we've had in the past, and the design made sense and provided four sidewalks to the extent possible up 682. I am somewhat confident that the bid would ensure constant maintenance of traffic based on what I read. The second item is not, in my opinion, satisfactory. I personally see people walking along this part of Route 682, as many of you have as well, at all times of the day and into the evening. Clearly, many who live in Kershaw Green don't have cars, so walk to and from Gomart on the corner across from Route 56. The other day, I saw a young woman, who I learned is from Africa, carrying her small baby on her back along that route. I see people walking their dogs and their children, or walking as couples, carrying their items, and wearing dark clothing even at night. Very difficult to see, it's quite scary. Many people have expressed to me that they fear hitting these people because there is no sidewalk. I also know that during the public comment session that the city gratefully had, many people that I met with were uncomfortable with this problem. I also met with Woda Cooper leadership, including Jeff Woda and their attorney, local attorney, Rusty Rittenhouse, who said they wanted to get the sidewalk built. I know they appealed to the mayor for resident safety and reiterated that they gave $70,000 toward the cost of sidewalks, agreeing that that's a pittance, but nonetheless, they hoped that this would already have gotten done. Ryan, please bring up the first slide. Okay, here is what we were given as the drawing for the roundabout at 682 and 56. The yellow highlighted areas are what is proposed as the sidewalks. So to orient you a little bit, the Gomart is on the corner. Can I look over? Okay. All right, so this up here is 682, and this down here is an extension of 682, and here's 56. So the Gomart is on the corner here. And so you have crosswalks here, crosswalks here, crosswalks there. The sidewalk goes up to the crosswalk here. And, but over here, interestingly, they propose to have a sidewalk to White's Mill. Over here, past the Gomart, they want to have a sidewalk that goes, starts going to the Middle School. I don't have any problem with the sidewalk to the Middle School.
Morrison Gordon Elementary.
Elementary school.
Exactly. Yes, thank you. And the White's Mill, I have never, ever seen anybody walking there. In my opinion, that is a waste of our money. So my concern is that we're not thinking this through adequately, and that the city was not listening to the concerns that people had at the public session. So what I'd like to then talk to you about is, Ryan, please bring up the second slide, or Ryan, or whomever's out there to do it, please bring up the second slide. All right, so this is a little bit hard to see, but remember, the sidewalk for 682 was cut off here, but the project goes all the way to here, past the ODOT property. The part that's the most dangerous is along ODOT property, because it's just a little cliff there, and it's really scary to walk there. So I don't understand why we're wanting to spend money to go to White's Mill, or right now, a less important one, going along the highway up 56, rather than extending a couple hundred feet towards the Kershaw Green Apartments for the safety of those people. I have heard, though I haven't been able to confirm it, that somebody already has been hit along that route, not exactly in that spot, but nonetheless, it's a scary thing. And I am not comfortable, frankly, supporting this, or even... And I am not comfortable, frankly, supporting this or even giving it a first reading until we have more discussion on the design. I really want this to happen. I just really want to push, and a lot of other people are, to extend that sidewalk. I know that the railroad's a problem. I know private property is a problem, but I cannot believe that ODOT would oppose helping with this. And unless I see evidence of that, I am not supporting this.
Thank you, Members Spieldness. Any other questions or comments? Members Scott?
I would just like to address one thing that Member Spieldness just mentioned. I, too, would like to see if there's any possible way to extend the sidewalk to Kershaw Green. I've seen a lot of residents of that housing development walking, and I'm just really afraid more of them are going to get hit. So I think, I'm sure it would cost a lot more money, but I'd wonder if there are any more grants out there or any more funding from ODOT that we could get to really intentionally extend the sidewalk, even if just on one side of the road, right up directly to Kershaw Green.
It's my understanding that that's...
Hold on, Members Spieldness. Member Swank?
Sorry.
No, she can go ahead. I can wait till after she...
No, I just want to say that...
Any other comments or questions from other councilmembers? Okay, Members Spieldness.
No, I just want to say that I know that it's, as I, I think I need to be sure to say that it's really hard to get the railroad and, you know, the other private property there. I really, if we just can get at least, rather than spending the money on some of these other areas, extending that to the project scope, which is along ODOT. Why we can't add a sidewalk just there. I know that there's discussion of having additional work north of that, even another roundabout up there, and more sidewalk, et cetera, which I'd be happy about. I understand it can't be included into this, although arguably it should be, in my opinion, but I understand we can't do that. But at least if we can get a little more sidewalk, I would be happy to support this.
Member Swank?
A question for the mayor. Projects such as these are often funded by a combination of city funds and grant funds. And it's my understanding to get a grant, it's generally a very specific set of details that have to be provided, and funds are granted accordingly based on someone's determination whether or not it's good or bad, or beneficial, I should say. Right now, we have two of these in the works. One is the roundabout that we're looking at now, but the other is that shared-use path out on Columbus Road. Rarely, if ever, is anyone walking on Columbus Road. Would it be possible to address this point, to move that project and the funds associated with it over here? Because of what I said to start, what it was awarded specifically for that. Okay.
No, no, and I appreciate that. Councilmember Swank, the answer is no, because it's all based upon, it's all based upon the ask that's given of the separate projects at the time and not having the ability to combine these together. I do see people walking up Columbus Road quite often, as well as cyclists, but I'm up and down there a lot. So I may be more aware just because of the frequency in which I drive up into that road. But to Councilmember Spieldness's point, if I correct in what I heard you say, is it possible to shift a sidewalk that is currently designed to go to White's Mill and have that instead flipped to the north side to where it's going, at least up to the AEP property? I mean, you're talking about the ODOT District 10 shop right there, right? But then beyond, up to the bridge over Margaret Creek?
Well, again, I know that trying to get the railroad on board is very difficult.
Railroad's a different thing altogether.
Yeah.
I think you mentioned it, the possibility. So ODOT is aware that we're interested in a, potentially, a second roundabout that would be in the vicinity of Armage Road and...
Lurig.
Lurig.
Lurig, thank you. I was going to say Lavelle, but that's wrong. But in that area, to help with a pedestrian crossing over these, it's not going to help at this point with the railroad, but we can probably continue to work with the railroad. There's great products that are out there being explored through DOT with, and this isn't going to be a great separation with the rail and the street and all that stuff, but, you know, they do have, you know, the funding for flyovers and stuff like that. And quite honestly, no one wants to walk across a bridge, you know, and the ADA requirements to build something that's ADA accessible over that, but we'll work on that, continue to work on that. But again, if I'm hearing you correctly, is there a possibility of flipping some of the sidewalk patterns as they show up right now in those designs and flip them around? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Something I'm worth exploring. I believe it's worth making that ask to see if we can, because it falls within the same scope of the project, period.
Right. Exactly. And that's all I'm asking for. You know, I understand there's limitations. I understand there's grant complications, et cetera, but that just is too important to many people and the safety of people who live here, so...
I've always acknowledged your concern with this, and it's something that I can certainly bring forward with District 10.
Thank you. So...
Member Eisner?
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the discussion. I just want to know, has this ordinance been read for the first time, or has it not?
It has.
It has?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't read it.
She didn't read it. She, you read the title. I heard that, but I never heard her read it. So if it hasn't been read, where does it stand? It's been introduced. We got to do something with it. We could table it. We could withdraw it.
I'm willing to read it.
Let's ask the law director's office. I believe it's been read for the first time.
You read the title, therefore it was read.
But I don't know if the law director's office can speak to this.
I don't really know. I mean, if you've read the title, but, you know, they are supposed to read, you know, in substance. I mean, there are other things that can be done. You can table it. You can, you know, send it back to committee.
Well, I'm willing to read it with the, because it's the first reading, with the understanding that I will never approve the way it is, because I want this to go through. I just want the money shifted. So that's not really the part of the, that's not really what's in the ordinance. That's what the ordinance dollars would be paying for. So if that clarifies anything or helps.
I do not believe it's in the authority of any single council member to, chair of a committee or not, to prohibit the introduction of an ordinance. If it is true, if what, I mean, it would seem to me that the title was read and then this ordinance had a substantive discussion, and I don't know how that happens with it on the agenda if it hasn't been read for the first time. I'm not sure how we have this whole discussion. You show maps, you talk, you know, you bring your concerns, but we declare it not read for the first time? I'm just, we can ask the law director, and we'll get a legal opinion on that.
Well, again, I'm okay with reading it.
But that is my... I understand that, and then there will be a vote, and all this will come up at the third reading. But I believe the answer for this evening will be that this has been read for the first time. I'm no lawyer, though. Let me tell you that right off the start. Member Swank?
I just, I'm looking at the map here, and in measuring, talking about shifting funds, in measuring from West Union Street to White's Mill, if we were to take that distance of sidewalk and apply it towards Kershaw Green, that would only get us three-fourths of the way to the railroad tracks, which means we would need a significant sum of additional money to extend that. So to the administration, would it be worth, personally, I'm in favor of sending the sidewalk to White's Mill, because I've talked with the folks about it, and they'd love to have it. But would it be appropriate to get an estimate? It doesn't have to be, you know, detailed, that we do through an engineering study and all that, but what sidewalk would cost and where would the money come from?
Yes is the answer to that.
Okay. And then the last question is this. There's a timeline for this. And is it based on the assumption that we'll do three readings, and in April we would pass this and it could move ahead?
Well, yes and no. I mean, yes, there is a timeline in which to expend the DOT funding that we have been given. This just allows for this to be advertised, go out to bid, and then if, seeing that we have a successful bid that is, you know, within 20% over the engineer's estimated cost, then we can award. But that still means that there's layers of detail moving forward. There's the appropriation of the funding and so on and so forth with the DOT monies, as well as the city share. But to your question, Councilmember Swank, we can certainly get an estimate as to what this would cost. Part of the plan, and Councilmember Spieldness, you touched on it, is, and again, DOT is tracking this, ODOT is tracking this, and that is having a second roundabout that would end up doing a lot of, you know, deconflicting of what would be a pedestrian passageway, as well as traffic flow through there, and helping with University Estates. I mean, there's just, there's a whole lot to this process. Now, that's time. That's going to take time to have that, you know, to do the planning, to sit there and knock on wood that DOT awards us on a second roundabout near there, which wouldn't be that dissimilar in a lot of ways from the two roundabouts that we're now seeing under construction at 682 and 33. It's just that there's not a 33 underneath it. I can certainly get answers to the questions. Let me just leave it at that.
So do you want me to finish reading?
Well, Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please.
Interject. All right, so after consulting the rules, Rule 20 of the Rules of Council says, "All ordinances or resolutions may be read by title only, providing all members of council have copies of all legislation presented." So as long as they have copies of legislation, it doesn't need to be read in full.
And Members Spieldness, I'm all for sidewalks, and I'd love to see a sidewalk at Kershaw Green, there's no doubt about that. I'm just speaking procedurally. I believe that we had a first reading tonight, but we can get a full, you know, ruling on that.
I'm fine with that, because it really doesn't affect the wording of the ordinance.
Right. We know that we often have ordinances that we're not reading every word, you know, it doesn't have to be fully as...
Well, there's a whole lot of numbers in it. Just put it that way.
So we'll get clarification about whether this has been read for the first time, and maybe at second reading, depending on what that ruling is, we can go into more details, and certainly at third reading, have more of a robust conversation, and people can decide what the best way forward is.
Well, hopefully, we'll get some changes in the design. That's all I'm asking for.
I'll just say that I know the Service Safety Director is well aware of the housing development down 682 to Kershaw Green, and that a sidewalk to that development is in the best interest. I know that the engineers are aware of the railroad crossing and the other issues going down 682, so it's not that they don't know about the issues, but I'm not going to, I'm not an engineer or a lawyer to really speak to why it's not in the project, but I appreciate you.
Well, I have to try.
I agree. Well done. Any other questions? Yes, Mayor?
Not a question, just to restate what the Assistant Law Director just said, and that is, it has been read for the first time.
Right. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Any, yes, please. Thank you.
Yes, John Molinaro, 87 University Estates Boulevard, here to speak on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to reiterate the things that Councilmember Spieldness said about the situation, but I am the president of the University of States HOA Association. We have not, as it were, had the opportunity to see these documents before today, these drawings, and assumed that perhaps the comments that we made in the public information and input session might have been incorporated into the drawings up until seeing these drawings today. There's a great deal of concern among our members. It was an issue of topic at our annual meeting in January. We don't want to be the ones to kill someone on that last 100 feet between where the ODOT back driveway goes down from 682 and the area for Pedestrian Walk widens all the way to Kershaw Green, and that corner where there is literally three feet between the guardrail and the road, up this much difference in height between a foot or so of shoulder and the gravel, and where people have a difficulty walking upright. That is the most dangerous piece. If we can get that 100 feet taken care of, we can probably cure 80% of the risk in that area. And so we would like to see that done. We, I went to the information session, made sure that this concern was expressed to the city both verbally and in writing at that time. We would really like to not be in a position where we might be the ones who injure someone because of a very, very poor design when there is a lot of money going into this project. And this is a time where that 100 feet, that's so critical, could be dealt with very easily. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Gudirelli. I am on the City Council's Task Force for Pedestrian Accessibility, Walkability, and Bicycles. Obviously, this is the type of stuff our task force deals with pretty directly. So a couple of notes. Firstly, I strongly support changing the intersection to a roundabout. It's proven time and time again that roundabouts are safer for pedestrians and people in automobiles. I think we are all in agreement on that. Most of the discussion has been on sidewalks, to which I will also say I fully support having sidewalks accessible, I would say honestly, in all four directions. I think it wouldn't hurt to even have one to White's Mill, because that would allow people from West Union Street, from Kershaw Green, to access their business in a way that doesn't require them to have a car as well. I'd also like to say, I feel like there hasn't been enough conversation about making sure that not only is there sidewalk access to the bridge on West Union Street, but that sidewalk access is ADA accessible, wide enough for people to get through. It was highlighted in one of the recent overlay zone proposals to perhaps put an overlay zone on West Union Street, which means the chance for a lot more development on that corridor is there in the city in the future. And I believe that connecting that area to the west end of Athens, so to say, Kershaw Green area, would be really beneficial to everyone. Obviously, the scope of this project doesn't deal with the railroad and perhaps another roundabout further north, as we've discussed, but those would be things that I would also fully support, because I think right now, living at Kershaw Green, there's not a safe way to get really anywhere else in the city except for maybe Littlefish across the street without having to walk on the side of road and put yourself in a dangerous situation. I can also attest, as someone who both walks and drives in Athens, that I have almost been hit by cars before, and I've almost hit people while driving before, because even if you're paying attention, sometimes people just come out of nowhere, especially at night or in the rain or something like that. I don't want to be hit and killed by a car, and I don't want to be the one to hit and kill somebody with my car either. So the other thing I want to mention, I'll try to keep my scope specifically to the ordinance that we are discussing today, is that there's been a lot of discussion about other housing projects like Kershaw Green. Obviously, there was the one on the south end that recently got withdrawn by the developer. And I would just like to say, in general, when we keep building these developments on the periphery of the city, we're now stuck in these situations where we have to redesign whole sections of the city to actually make them walkable, accessible, and I think that's just something we need to keep in mind when we think about where we're building into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just note for the viewing public and anyone who's not aware, if you can get over 682, which I'm not recommending, to Littlefish, there is a bike path extension behind Littlefish that very safely takes you to Nelsonville or to the east side of Athens. So that is available. Any other comments or questions from the audience?
I'm Sally Jo Wiley again from Albany. I just wonder if you don't extend that safely to that new development, would that open you up to liability later on if somebody gets hit? Because you didn't do it, and you knew it was a problem.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, moving on to Ordinance 35. We are on.
President.
Yes.
Can I ask one last question?
Yes, Members.
Really just for my own clarity, is there, because it's ODOT funds for this roundabout, is there a set rule as to how far out that development goes? Does it have to be on highway and does that change anywhere on 682? Just looking at the map as to, does it stop at the river or private property or?
It's, it's just, it's bound to whatever the perimeter was for what we proposed to ODOT. And, you know, early in the process, we can ask for changes to make it, you know, early in the process to go, can we go further? Can we do this? We did have discussion about, you know, going all the way up to Kershaw Green with District 10, which was when District 10, you know, basically said, given the funding that we're giving you and the original parameters that you were talking about, they encouraged us to apply for a second roundabout at Armitage and.
Lurig.
Whatever they are.
Lurig.
Thank you. And Lurig. Well, these days I'll remember that.
Any last comments? Moving on to Ordinance 35-25, an ordinance authorizing engineering and construction of the Athens Streetscape Beautification Project, number 383, introduced by Councilmembers Spillane.
Last but not least for me today. All right, so, yeah, this one is kind of exciting. We've been talking about it for a while. There's been some, no changes in the design, but we're really, I think, really getting to it. So, this project is to bury overhead electric and telecommunications lines in the uptown, specifically along State and Mill between College and Congress, along Carpenter between State and Congress, and includes sidewalks and, and streetscapes features along Carpenter. So there's a lot of, I, I looked over the materials that was provided in the, the bid and there's lots of lights and curbs and sidewalk things and stuff that's hard for non-engineers to understand, but it looks pretty impressive. So, it's kind of exciting. Whereas the city has received 6.5 million in Appalachian Community Grant Program Round Two Funds for said project, this would allow the Service Safety Director to authorize entering into contracts for engineering and construction of the Athens Streetscape Beautification. The 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 11524 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance of some of 6,500,000 to Appalachian Community Grant Fund 905, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to 6,500 from the Appalachian Community Grant Fund for said project 383. I do have a couple of questions. One thing I wasn't completely clear about, because again, these drawings are a little tough for non-engineers to understand, but it appears as though there's some changes in street direction. So in other words, if I'm reading it correctly and if I understand email we, we got, there's two-way streets in a couple of, one or two places now. Do you want to tell us about that a little bit because I think people would want to know?
I'm going purely off of memory. I believe that East State Street would be two-way currently from College on up to, to Court Street, that it is one-way. And then Mill is the other street that is one-way, that we would be putting in two-ways along that corridor. Yeah, the street is wide enough, you know, it, it, once upon a time it was two-way, much like Court Street was two-way way back in the day. It was also one-way in the opposite direction at one point in time. But then, you know, Washington Street is already two-way, so that's not going to change nor is West State Street, which West State Street is a two-way street.
Okay, well, that wasn't, that wasn't mentioned in here and I think that's significant enough that people ought to be aware of it, so.
Yeah, I believe it's only East State Street.
Yes, sir.
It's not Mill. Mill will remain one direction to the east. East State Street in front of Passion Works will go two-ways. That's the only section will go, be changed to.
Thank you.
Okay. Members Swank, is that you're?
Yeah, that was mine too. I'm, I'm just glad, and, and Mayor, you and I talked about this three years ago, the fact that we're getting these, these lines buried. It does two things. One, it improves the look and feel, and heaven forbid, it protects those lines from the kind of tornadoes and things that we saw in incapacitating the city. I don't know if this is related or not, but when a couple of people told me today when they saw this item on the agenda, they said, could you please bring up possibly revisiting the back-end parallel parking on Congress, which is proving to be a very dangerous situation with the large trucks. In fact, I almost got hit today because the way the large trucks, you're on an angle, they're clear out that you literally have to go across the yellow line. So, I said, yep, I'll bring it up.
Any other comments or questions from City Council? Yes, Member Thomas?
Is, West Union is going two-way, correct? Is that changed or is that still happening?
That's what I thought too.
So, West Union?
Oh, West Union.
Between Ca, or between Congress and Court? Did that get changed or is that still?
That's something we're still exploring. I mean, that, that's going to require a whole different level of funding because we've got to come up with new signal masts. The, the current signal masts are designed to add arms onto them, but, you know, that also requires the very top portion of.
President.
Richland slash North Congress or South Congress, whatever you want to call it, right there by BW3s. You know, that's, we're still looking at to see how this can be done, but I would like to see West Union, I'm going to be honest with everyone here, I would like to see West Union be turned into a two-way street because currently it is the only portion of Union, you know, east or west, that is a one-way street, which creates, in my opinion, a carbon emissions challenge because if you want to go West Union, as you're coming uptown, this in particular, you're, you're going up onto President, President onto Court, you've got to go all the way up to Washington Street, come all the way back down around and then jump onto West Union to head westbound, as opposed to being able to just to make a left-hand movement off of, off of South Court Street onto West Union, if that makes sense to everybody. But again, it has its own set of challenges with just getting the money for re-signalizing that area and figuring out the flow on that one short stretch, like I said, of, of South Congress slash North Richland Avenue, right next to BW3s.
Okay. I just knew it had been talked about and I wasn't sure if it was still a part of this or not.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions on Ordinance 35-25? Member Wood?
Yeah, I also think this is great. I think it's, as, as other folks have said, I think it's not only more beautiful, it's safer, it's better all around. Just curious what the length of time for the project will be and, and what'll be disrupted by it on those streets?
It'll be likely a 12-month project, 2025 into 2026. For this project, a lot of it will be underground work, again, burying the utilities underground. And then it'll be sidewalk work like we, much like we did on West Union between Congress and Court Street with, with correcting some of the ADA challenges that you see into some of the businesses. And again, getting things buried underground, but we will still have traffic movements through that area.
Thank you, Mayor. Other comments or questions? Anything to add, City Administration?
I'll just add, you know, change is hard. And, but this is a project we've been waiting for, for a long time. I would encourage council, if you haven't done it, or anybody who's here, take a walk down during a nice summer day, walk down West State Street and just look up. And it's just quite an eyesore when it comes to the mess of utilities that are overhead. The same holds true with, with Congress, or not Congress, on Carpenter Street. This is correcting a lot of that and this is money that came from the governor's Appalachian Community Grant Program. It's being funded, the, the lead on this, I think, Councilmember Spillane has mentioned this, Ross County was the lead, we became a sub underneath that, so they're the ones who are managing the funds. So, everything that we are expensing basically runs through Ross County, much like we're the lead on the At Work in Appalachia, which includes the Builders Club in Somerset, the Koshockton Collaborative, and then the two facilities in Logan, Ohio, along with the Armory, to where we're the lead on distributing funds. So, it's nice to not have to be the point. We'll let Ross County manage that, but the money is ready and, and we're ready to get to work on this project and get it done. Granted, we get successful bids.
I'll just say that if you do go to West Union and look up, be careful because when I was in your seat, Member Wood, the first comment I got was from a employee who works on West State Street, and it was the pigeons who sit on the lines and spoil the cars that park along there. And they will be happy to know that'll no longer be an issue with buried, buried lines. Any other comments or questions from the public on this project? Yes, please.
Yeah, and I'm Sally Jo Wiley from Albany, but I'm also a business owner, Sidebar. And this is the reason I came tonight, is how long is this, is this going to close the road? Is it going to block off, you know, because Passion Works is moving and then there's two little, there's the Sidebar and then there's, there's the Heart Boutique. And if you take away the parking and you block that off, those businesses are going to fail. Particularly if you're going to do it for a year like you did Union Street. You know, you've got to have parking. There's no parking hardly for that area to begin with. How long is this project going to take? Are you going to close the street? And if you're going to block off the street, how long is that going to happen? I've looked at where the lines are, they actually go up, the, the, the poles actually go up Mill Street and then across to the corner of the building where Passion Works in and goes to that corner of that building and to the gas station. You know, if you, if you lock down this street for any length of time, you condemn those businesses to fail. And there's been too many businesses around here that have failed. Is there any answer to this? How long is this going to, I mean, how long are you going to have a street blocked? Is traffic going to be stopped?
Can I? Well, first of all, every contract has to have a maintenance of traffic plan, and I did look at some of this and I think, I feel confident that the city has a positive way of dealing with it, but I'll let the mayor answer further.
Yeah, well, I already mentioned this, the entire project is going to be 12 months. That doesn't mean it's going to be 12 months in, in front of every.
I understand that. I didn't figure it would be in that one spot. I mean, you've got several streets, I have the plans that you're working on and where, where those electric lines are currently. I wouldn't imagine you would change their direction that much.
Okay.
But, you know, if you block that off and you take away the parking for any length of time, summer particularly is very difficult for businesses anyway uptown. That's why you have the, the things uptown to bring people back in. You're just, you know, condemning our businesses to fail if you shut that down for any length Both those businesses are new and, and trying to get well-established.
Members Swank?
Mr. Mayor, when we redid Union Street, would this project be very similar to that in terms of, when I'm talking Union back, not the Lost Row thing, but when we redid and made West Union Street, look, that one block look so nice? This is a similar project, is it not?
It is a similar project. I will say though, one of the things that really spurred that project on, that was in 2014, and unfortunately due to the fire, it was behind a chain-linked fence up until 2016. 16 is when we started working on the sidewalk improvement and new businesses went into some of those facilities, old businesses reopened again along that corridor. It was a lot of sidewalk work. It wasn't burying utilities underground, obviously, but it was doing the sidewalk work and, and we, we paid for that with that. There was, there's no DOT money that went into paying for that project. We paid it out of street improvements, street improvements for the city.
But we were able to manage that project effectively and working with businesses and all of that.
We did.
Yeah. I, I've got to say this, somewhere along the line, people are going to realize, when you go to Walmart, you don't park in the front door. But, and, and hang on, I understand what you mean about access. You've, you've got to be able to walk in the front door.
Exactly. And if you look at where the sidewalk changes are going to be, it's like in the front door. There's going to be some trees and.
Yeah. So we were able to manage that project on West Union and I think we've learned some things from that. And speaking from as strictly as one council person, as we get closer to this, I think there are going to be conversations this time so that we as a city have a better understanding of your needs and you as a business person can understand the process better. And I think that line of communication will go a long way to addressing many of the concerns you bring up today.
Well, timing is really important and, and if you're, you're going to have that blocked off for the, for any length of time, you condemn those businesses to fail.
I understand.
Because they're new, they don't have large bank accounts, they're still trying to grow. And, you know, summer's difficult uptown for uptown businesses to begin with. Ask any person that's a service person. They have to save their money through the winter to make it through the summer because the tips are down to nothing.
As Members Swank said, we really appreciate the communication and we hope that, we're glad to have you at council tonight. We hope you continue to communicate. This ordinance is about the appropriating the money and the authority to enter into contracts. So we're not at the stage yet where we'll know what somebody plans to do, but as soon as we know, I think the communication with the businesses will be very important. We hope that you continue to attend council or, or stay connected with us.
I will be on it.
Okay. We appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public?
Andrew Gudirelli again, 191 West Washington Street, Department B, and I am a member of City Council's Task Force on Pedestrian Accessibility, Walkability and Bicycles. This is a project that I think is a positive step forward for the city. I think that having a city that's visually appealing is really important. It keeps people wanting to walk around the city, which is going to make them go to more businesses, right? But a couple of notes, so, we've had a couple of people speak about like not impeding the flow of traffic during the construction. I'd like to emphasize that from my perspective, I thinking, I'm thinking more about the flow of traffic for pedestrians even more than cars. I used to walk past the Lost Row project, I still walk past it every day. I say "used to" because it was the sidewalk that was blocked off that kept me from going to Court Street Coffee as much kept me from going to other places. There was not a loss in people being able to drive past there. I drove past it all the time. It was, it was the pedestrians. And when you're dealing with a place like Sidebar, I would hope that people aren't usually driving to a bar. I would think that people would be, being responsible and walking there if they can, right? So, keeping that pedestrian access open is really important as there's a construction project going on. If people have to park a block away, then they will still be able to have some sort of pedestrian access. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind as we deal with the construction phase. I would also say that I, I was looking at some of the street views of some of these power lines. A lot of the poles do have lights on them. One issue that I've been working on with the task force is actually trying to get lighting on, on the west side more because there's a lot of streets that don't. So we just need to make sure that we also have it in the plans of this project to make sure that if we are taking down poles that have lights on them, that we're actually putting up new lights somewhere because we don't want to end up having an unintended consequence of having an unlit area that is currently lit with this project. But overall, I, I think this is the right step forward as long as we make sure that the construction project isn't harming our local business owners as, as previously discussed. It will help the city beautification and I think it'll, you know, getting rid of some of those power poles and all that's going to help with accessibility and walkability as well.
Any other questions from the public?
Just going to say.
Member Wood?
Yeah, real quick, hearing more about the project, this actually is one that I should recuse myself from. And so, yeah, definitely going to, because it is very much, this actually is something that really very directly does impact me. So, I'm going to, I think it's good, but I'm going to recuse myself from here on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Understood. Ordinance 36-25 is an ordinance authorizing engineering services for design of the Columbus Road Lift Station, project number 359, introduced by Mr. Member McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This has been discussed thoroughly at committee, and I'll just read the beginning. Whereas ordinance 72-23 authorized engineering services for design of project number 359, whereas this project will replace two sewage lift stations that are undersized and at the end of their useful life, the first on Door Lane, Columbus Road Number One, and the second on Theater Lane, and will support the new hospital and expected growth of the surrounding area. Be it ordained that the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into contracts for construction of the Columbus Road Lift Station, project number 359. I'll provide just some of the financial details here. This is $120,000 to CDBG Fund 248, $1,630,000 to Sewer Fund 750.637, and the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $1,750,000 as follows, $120,000 from CDBG Fund 248, and $1,630,000 to Sewer Fund 750.637, again, for project 359. This has now been read for the first time.
Thank you. Member McCary, any comments or questions on the Columbus Road Lift Station ordinance? City Administration? Members of the public? Seeing none. Ordinance 37-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. 37-25 reads as follows. Section 1, the 2025 appropriation ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $18,393.24 to Transportation Assistant Fund 214.716, transaction code 300, to pay the balance of the city's 2024 local match to HAPCAP and $340,000 to Sanitation Fund 760.636, transaction code 300, and increase in the total appropriations by said amount. Section 2, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer from Internal Service Fund 865 to Medical Insurance Fund 866, amount $15,588.83. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any comments or questions on this ordinance from councilmembers? City Administration? Members of the public? Seeing none. Ordinance 38-25 is an ordinance approving a then-and-now certificate for payment and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reads as follows. An ordinance authorizing a then-and-now certificate for a payment to HAPCAP in the amount of $18,393.24 to pay the city's public transit 2024 fourth quarter capital and operating local match. The ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, in order to maintain fiscal integrity, and shall be in full force and effect upon the passage and approval by the mayor. Thank you.
Member Reisner, the auditor's office has requested suspension of the rules for all then-and-now certificates. Would you be open to a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 38-25 for the reasons you just stated.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 38-25. Any comments or questions on the suspension? Seeing none. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules are suspended, Member Reisner.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 38-25. Seconded.
You have a motion and a second to adopt the then-and-now certificate, ordinance 38-25. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? Yes, Members, Podfield?
I just wondered if the city treasurer would be willing to comment on this one about how it would affect the city or anything we should know before making a decision on this?
No, this is, again, this is standard then-and-now. This was just a bill that needed to be paid by the end of '24. We, the way it just worked out, it just didn't happen. We just need to make sure it's done right now. I mean, the money's there, we're all good. You just need to get it done, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Podfield. Any other comments or questions from City Councilmembers? City Administration? Any additional pressure? Members of the public? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting 38-25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. We now move on to announcements and other business. May I have a motion to accept the February 2025 financial reports?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any comments or questions on these financial reports? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the financial reports from February are adopted or accepted. Well, we now have the opportunity for citizens to speak. Members, Frank?
Yeah, other business, real quick, very, very quick. The mayor mentioned earlier about contacting our elected representatives. Mr. Mayor, would it be possible, because I bet if we took a poll of everybody in City Hall right now, most people don't even know who our elected representatives are, particularly on the local level, would it be possible on the city's website, under the Government tab, to have a tab that says "State and Federal Elected Officials"? With contact information, people would just click on and boom, they know who to call?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other other business?
Would you like me to include both the 94th and the 95th? Although we are in the 95th now, we're no longer in the 94th district. It doesn't hurt.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt.
I'll do this for you. Any other comments or questions or other business? All right, we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that are not covered on tonight's agenda. Anyone who would like to come forward to speak, please come to the podium, let us know your name, your address. Do you represent a group? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned and we will hang out for the students.